Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for attending. Hope everyone's well. Um, I've got a rather short agenda today, so hopefully it won't take too long of your time. Um, so we'll start with item one Neil, which is apologies, please.
Yeah, certainly Phil. So I have apologies from Jane Burrows, from Fay Padfield, Clive Sentence and Becky Harrison. Um, I also have apologies from Colin Hayfield, councillor Colin Hayfield, and Andy Felton, the Assistant Director for Resources, is going to hope to join us later. And Larry may have to leave halfway through the meeting to take an urgent phone call.
Okay, thank you for that. Very grateful we accept those apologies.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item two is voting on actions from the last meeting, um, which have been circulated. Are we happy that they're a true and fair record? Can you now further hold your peace?
I think, yeah, Phil, I think we just need, I need to expand on the last item, the Chair's business. Um, just to explain the reason for that item. It was because the local authority were putting in a disapplication to the SFA for the funding. Um, and they asked us if we could actually put it in front of Schools Forum for approval. Although having checked the rules, um, that didn't necessarily have to happen, but we did it as a courtesy. So to inform Schools Forum of what we're, what we're intended to do with the Pairs Centre and how we're going to fund it from council resources. So I'm just going to amend those, those notes to reflect that.
Okay, thank you for that Neil. Um, are there any matters arising? Um, page two. Page three. Nope. That's that version. Thank you. Uh, item three then is the first of our two matters for decision today, uh, which is the report on the early years funding formula. Um, Neil, I think you're going to take this on you.
Yes, I, yes, I am, Phil. So shortly before Christmas, the ESFA announced the funding rates for early years providers for 2122. Um, so the rates have increased by eight p an hour for two-year-olds and six p an hour for three and four-year-olds. Um, the other funding for early years per pupil premium disability access fund and supplementary for maintained nursery schools has, has remained the same, although we do have some issues around the sustainability for the maintained nursery school supplementary funding. Um, but we're waiting for further guidance from the SFA on that. So for the two-year-olds funding the AP, we are obliged to passport that to providers and that is what we propose to do for 2122. For the three and four-year-olds, the six p, the local authority does have uh, the ability to withhold 5% of that funding to support central services.
Sorry Neil, to interrupt, can I just double check that figure? Just because looking at the report, the figures actually indicate eight p for the three and four-year-olds.
Does it?
Yeah, it says it's increased by six p an hour from £4.36 per hour to £4.44.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. And yeah, um, yeah, sorry, if you look at the, it's the, I do apologise, it is an error. If you look at the table at 3.3, it's actually £4.38 an hour. So then the narrative's wrong, the table's correct. So it has changed from £4.38 for 2122 to £4.44 for 2122. So it is, it is an increase of six p.
Yeah, so in 3.1, that's just a typo then, isn't it?
That is, that's just, yeah, it's a typo and I apologise for that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for raising that question.
Then that's good, thank you. Um, so no, it is six p an hour for three and four-year-olds. And the intention is for the local authority to passport the whole of that six p to providers in 2122, which means that the, the universal rate will now increase by £4.15. Um, the working group met last week to discuss this and again, we decided we wouldn't move on the deprivation supplement funding whilst it's remained the same rate as the early years per pupil premium at 53 p per eligible child. And that's, happy to take any, any questions before we go on to the recommendation, Phil.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Neil?
Hi there Neil, thanks for that. Um, so am I right in understanding that this is guaranteed for the, for the next financial year then?
What, the £4.15 universal rate for all providers?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and after, so after the next financial year, um, is it to be, does that continue or what, what happens?
Well, into future financial years, if the funding stays the same, then we will maintain the £4.15 an hour. If funding goes up again, um, because we would like to see funding go up by at least inflation year on year. Um, but for the early years providers, as you know, Sarah, that, that's not happened.
Yeah.
Until about the last two years, the two previous years, the funding was flat.
Yeah.
So it had no increase and you, 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 I don't need to tell you that, that happened and, and, and the impact that had on the sector. Um, but we, we will try and passport as much money to early years providers in, in the future. What we want to do is, is the other issue is try and keep, to keep that £4.15 for as long as we can. Hence why we want to keep the, um, a reserve to make sure that we, we can maintain that level of funding into the future.
Okay, yeah, and I, I was pleased to see the point, 6.4, um, saying that you intend to ring fence that reserve for all providers.
Yes, yes.
Not potentially, um, picking up any loss from the, from the maintained nursery schools.
No, we, we, we can't do that and we wouldn't do it. We have, we have to provide all funders the same.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions before we move on?
Yep, so the vote, the recommendation is, um, so the Schools Forum has asked to approve the universal base rate of £4.15 for 2122 as recommended in paragraph 3.3 and table one.
Okay, um, all those in favour of that, please, please raise your hands.
I think we have a consensus agreement there, there Phil.
Okay, just check, is, are there any against? Shout out to people, right, okay, thank you. Thank you very much indeed for that. Um, we'll move on then to item four, uh, which is the National Funding Formula for 2122. Um, and again, that, Neil, isn't it?
Yes, it is, Phil, thank you. Um, so you've had a copy of, copy of the report. So this basically builds on the information and the decisions that Schools Forum made at their extraordinary meeting back in November. Um, that was predicated on us getting our final DSG settlement for the Schools Block, which came out again a week before Christmas. Um, just to pick up some of the points, uh, 2.2, um, which outlines the increase in pupil numbers in Warwickshire, which has been an increase of 0.75%. Um, that's actually quite low compared to previous years. Um, so for 2021, we actually had a 1.7% increase in pupil numbers within schools. 1920, it was 1.9% increase. Um, at the moment, we don't have any evidence for the reason for that, whether it is COVID-19 and children being kept, kept away from school or it's just a slowing down in the number of houses that are being built in Warwickshire. Because there has actually been quite extensive house building over the last few years. Um, so, so the, the numbers are slightly less than we had anticipated. The rest of the report just goes through about what the factors are within the National Funding Formula. Um, so just outlining the, the base rates for pupils, um, setting the minimum funding guarantee at 2%. Um, 2.5 is quite an important issue because this, this is whereby the ESFA have moved the funding for historic teachers' pay and pension costs out of grant and into the National Funding Formula from 2122. In money terms, it equates to almost £16 million of funding to support that additional burdens within schools. Um, and that has had an, an impact on the 0.5% disapplication, which we'll come to on shortly. So at 2.6, it just lists the fact that we've been able to apply the hard national funding formula um, to all schools within Warwickshire for 2122. The discussions we had in November was about allocating the additional allocations and there was three areas that Schools Forum approved, which was the transfer of 0.5% to the high needs block, extending sparsity funding to all small schools and increasing the lump sums for small schools. For the transfer of the 0.5%, um, it's actually less than 0.5% of the Schools Block in total because the pay and pensions, um, grant is, is protected. So we can't apply that 0.5% to £16 million worth of DSG. Um, on the sparsity funding, um, we did want to increase sparsity funding to all our small schools, not those that are just rural schools. Um, after consultation with the ESFA, and they weren't prepared for us to move the distance between two schools to zero so that we would actually pick up the sparsity for all our small schools based on number and role. But following discussions, they did, they have allowed us to change the rules, um, to change the two miles by road rather than as the crow flies. What that has meant is seven schools will now be eligible for sparsity funding in 2122.
Neil, can I just quickly ask, um, is there any schools that were expecting sparsity funding that now won't be getting it?
Yes, I mean, well, the issue is, is we always said around sparsity funding was around affordability and we got approval from the ESFA with our disapplication. There were 30 schools, um, that fell into the small school category based on number and role only. Um, so potentially because of the consultation, there may be 23 schools that are going to be disappointed. Um, but we gave them no guarantee that they would get this funding. Um, so I do have seven schools, um, that will get additional funding because of that two-mile-by-road journey rule changing. Um, it's a shame for the 23 schools that will, will not get additional funding through, through sparsity, but they will be picked up by getting additional funding through the lump sums.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to check Neil, that nobody had kind of, um, put that within their budgets and now.
I was, I was very clear both with, with schools and with finance officers supporting schools, that they were not to, to, to budget for it at this stage until we had certainty around it.
But the seven schools that have got it do know they've got it.
Not yet.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, thanks.
Once, once Schools Forum, um, have, have, have agreed, you know, given their views today, then, then it will be shared with, with, with schools, um, over the next few weeks.
Okay, I think Neil's negotiated as hard as he could with, uh, yeah, the ESFA and Neil, yeah.
Yes.
You tried to wriggle. Um, okay, I've got a couple of question and comments, Martin Davis, please.
Yes, it's just a comment really against 3.2. Um, when, with all the publicity at the moment, presumably this issue of preschool meal eligibility and the costs of it might be a continuing trend.
Yes, absolutely, and that, that is a, that is the issue. Part of the problem is, is that when 2122 funding is set nationally, it's done on what's called, um, primary units of funding and secondary units of funding. So different levels of funding done for primary school children and a different level of funding for secondary school children. Um, and that, that, that's done based on, um, last year's census data, last year's, basically last year's data. From one year to the next, generally that information stays the same. COVID-19 has had a massive impact on preschool meals and I think everybody's seen, seen, seen that in, in the press. What the ESFA were not prepared to do was change those puffs and sufs to reflect the preschool meals increased uptake, um, because that actually had to be a policy change um, from, from their side. And their view was that each individual local authority would have to cover that off within the Schools Block DSG. I mean, we've been quite fortunate that, that our settlements over the last two years have been a little bit more generous than they have in previous years. So it has given us a bit more flexibility around the funding. For next year, so for 2223, when they come to calculate the primary units of funding, the secondary units of funding, one would expect them to take into account the fact is that the uptake of preschool meals is now higher than it used to be. So hopefully the funding should go up to, to, to reflect that.
Yes, thank you.
And going on from your point, Martin, I don't think we've hit the peak in that because with the, with the end of furlough and as we go into the spring, I think there's going to be some very hard decisions, isn't there?
Yes, yeah. I mean, we're, we're running at 24% on, on the census data between the two years. I'm aware of other local authorities that it's hitting almost 50%.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, Larry, you've had your hand up. Did you want to, to speak still?
Yes, thanks Phil. But just for clarification Neil, the sparsity grant would be an annual grant, wouldn't it?
Um, no, no, the sparsity for rural schools, um, is, is an annual grant because it's in the National Funding Formula. Extending that on the, on the, to those additional seven schools, uh, we would have to put in a disapplication each year because it will be around affordability again. So we have to look at each individual year to see what we can afford to do within the overall DSG Schools Block settlement.
Just from my simple mind, uh, at the last meeting, we voted on an issue, didn't we, for a one-off payment?
Which is the sparsity funding. I mean, that's what you said, it would only be guaranteed for, for, for one year. For those schools that, for those schools that are eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I've come back to the, to the report, there's no other questions. Um, so with, with the, with the sparsity funding, I mean, if we'd applied it to all our 30 small schools, um, that, that would have had, um, an impact of, of taking out of that 1.3 million um, that's available, um, because we're only applying it to seven schools, like they would get £45,000 each. Uh, the allocation is £315,000. What this has meant is we've actually been able to slightly increase the lump sum, um, payments to, to schools. Um, so now we've managed to set those at £130,000 per school rather than £118,800. Um, when we finally allocate all that money, it still leaves us just a small amount, £94,000 in reserve that we'll hold within the growth fund, um, which is what we've done in previous years.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments on the report and Neil's presentation, please? Okay, I think we're ready to move to the, um, the recommendation.
Yeah, so the recommendations are Schools Forum agree a consensus on its advice to Cabinet regarding the continuation of moving to the hard national funding formula in 2122.
Okay, all those in favour of that, please raise your hands.
Okay, looks like we have a consensus on that, Phil.
Okay, thank you very much for that. If you'd like to lower your hands then again, please.
Yeah. Didn't have a very good, good, good go at this report because recommendation two is, is, is an old recommendation. Um, because the recommendation should be Schools Forum agree a consensus on its advice to Cabinet to support the use of mileage, um, rather than distance as the crow flies for allocating sparsity funding.
Okay, is everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favour of that then, please show.
Okay, so we're going to have a consensus on that.
Right, thank you very much.
And then there'll just be the recommendation three, which was completely missed off, which is increasing the lump sum payments to £130,000 per school.
Okay, is everybody clear? Okay, all those in favour of that, please show. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Right, the next item then is, um, send an inclusion change programme update and that's Dwayne, I believe.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I'm just going to provide you with an update today on the send and inclusion change programme. And for School Forum members to consider whether they're part of the Top Up Funding Project Group. Um, just general updates from me, um, let's start off with the vision. And the vision for children, young people in Warwickshire is quite clear and that all our children and young people, um, lead fulfilling lives and part of, of the local community. And the send change programme focuses really on three visions within that and that is to improve the outcomes for children, young people with special educational needs. Data showing us that the attainment rate, um, is, is in decline at all stages throughout their education. And for Warwickshire County Council officers to make decisions in a clear, fair and transparent way and to ensure the system, um, that are in place are sustainable, not just for now but for, for the future. Um, at the moment, we have 31 projects, seven of which the projects have targets to help close and the gap between the funding allocation and expenditure. And we will provide more financial updates in January following the next forecast we have, um, and which we would undertake. So the three existing items, we have attached to savings we got in 2021 and there's a three furthermore, the projects of savings attached to them in 2122. We've appointed the program team and what we've done is seconded from in-house. We have seconded two, um, principally, sorry, two educational psychologists on a job share and that's Sarah Crawford and Sarah Green. We have appointed a member of staff on the specialist teaching service and that's Tammy Mason, a member of staff on the statutory service, which is Sendar. And we, we, um, pulled that team together and they're now all in place as of the 4th of January. We have met with elective members and we have had two task and finish groups with cross-parties. Um, we have another further three groups to meet and they are scheduled to take place before we meet overview and scrutiny again in February 2021. If we look at the project update, if I explain to you quickly how the projects are done, first of all, um, with our project management team, we have a planning preparation document, we call these PPDs. Um, from the PPDs, what we draw out is the ASIS process of, so the ASIS process, how we do things currently. And as we work along the groups and with the sort of work streams, we, we start pulling together what the TOB process is going to look like and really is a confirmation of what benefits that new process um, will bring to Warwickshire County Council. Um, after we've done that, we have, we will be having strategic meetings to know what the implementation phase and what timeframes we will be implementing some projects. There are currently four projects at the moment that are live. Um, sorry, there are currently four projects are now live, 10 are in development phase of vocal business case, uh, uh, sort of plans. I think today, the most significant change today, I want to sort of bring to everybody's attention, is that we prioritised, um, one of our projects from the Empower Room and that project was around changing the conversation. And the change of the conversation would have engaged our schools at a school level. Um, and due to COVID-19 and the pressures currently on schools and with, with lockdown, we, we put that down a phase rather than a phase one, we've moved that a phase. In saying that, um, what we have done is reprioritised some of the stuff that was in phase two and moved them up. Um, one is around, um, the Ready Rechner and the review of the special school matrix and that's how we fund our schools through this, uh, through the special school matrix. Um, we've combined those projects now into one project, which we're calling School Top Up Funding. So what we're going to be looking through them projects is how schools are funding, funded, in particularly our mainstream schools. As I said, when I joined Warwickshire County Council, I didn't feel the level of element funding going in with children into our mainstream schools. Um, was, was, you know, significant and therefore I felt there was room for, for growth in, in that. Um, so what we want to look at is how we fund our children in line with our plans and how the sort of provision outlined in section F of the plan is met financially. And we will also work with our special schools, um, in terms of how they are funded. Their fund is slightly different from our mainstream schools in so much as they are place-led funded of £10,000, um, and then the element three. But, um, I think, you know, what we need to be clear is that the funding must go with the needs, is, is, is the greatest. But what I am anticipating is a rise in funding in mainstream school and consequently we should see a decline in children coming out of our mainstream schools. Um, ensuring the level of funding is correct and the, the schools could meet that, um, individual needs. Um, in terms of the, the project group, um, we are, we will be, um, bringing into the project group head teacher representatives from across all our schools in, in Warwickshire. And, um, again, from, you know, and I can sort of say for me today is asking this group here for representatives to join that group so we can look at the level of funding that is actually going in to our schools within Warwickshire. So any questions, anybody? You're all moved, Phil?
Done. Martin Davies, please.
No, I'm not, sorry, shouldn't be coming through, don't worry.
Amy Woodward, please. Amy? C McKay, sorry, I don't know what your given name is.
Craig.
Craig, sorry, Craig McKay.
Sorry, I think my hand was up from the vote, sorry.
All right, then, I'm sure you want to talk.
Hello. Okay, and from the report, is there any early years head on? Is there any data of the amount of early years plans that are in place in our early year settings? Because that's not covered in here, I just wondered if School Forum could have that data at point.
Yes, absolutely, Nick. What we do when we review in the early years part of the service and how you're funding for children, at the moment, it doesn't seem to be here. So if you look at an early intervention model, unfortunately, the early years don't have a lot of children with education, health and care plans, we tend to not give them. Now, that's the opposite to what I actually want to happen. I want to be able to give the plans as early as possible so we can have better outcomes. So when I look at your funding, your funding at the moment comes from an inclusion pot. And therefore, we don't have a funding structure per se for children in early years. But this will certainly be part of the early years review of that service and will certainly be part of the funding, sorry, I'm looking on the screen over here, will certainly be part of then, you know, the funding project as well, is if children and young people have plans, if young children have plans in earlier setting, what is the funding mechanism that goes in with that high level of need?
Brilliant, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anymore? And Dwayne, you said you wanted reps possibly from this team, how many people do you want?
As many as want to join us, because it's important, Phil, in terms of the financial modelling, finance will be heavily involved with this, because obviously, we will have to model what's going out to school and show the impact on the high needs block. So I do want to get funding into school quickly, so as many people that want to be involved, please do, if you go in the chat, I can take down your names, so if you want to be involved, I'm happy, Phil, to take from the chat.
Okay, and how often does the project group meet?
Well, okay, so we have, so I'll have to check with Ross on that, because I'm involved in every 31 project, so I'm meeting every day of the week. So I think that would be probably once every fortnight, once every month, I'll have to check the time, but I will come back to ever then and schedule that out for people, Phil, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you've got three people so far.
Brilliant, thank you. Can I ask Ian Burton, is that Nicola?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay.
Yes, Nikki, thanks.
Thank you, Nikki, brilliant.
Okay. Right, and another one. Right, okay, just need to let, put it in the chat before the end of the meeting, please.
Lovely, thank you. That's it for me, everybody, and thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that, Dwayne. Right, item six is DSG Monitoring Report, and that's Pernina.
Hi there, good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, so this is a regular report that we provide on the forecast position of the DSG, split out between the four blocks. So just by way of a bit of a reminder for everyone, so 1.2 gives the original DSG allocation that we received back in March 2020. Then table two in 1.3 shows actually how that then gets adjustments made to it based on ESFA and DFE information. So you can see the original allocation, those recoupment and special schools growth, et cetera, adjustments that take place, taking us to our current allocation, which is the 235 million. And then table 2.1 provides the forecast and therefore the variance against that total amount split by the four blocks. You can see there that we are projecting an underspend on three of the areas, but the overspend remains in the high needs block, which I don't believe will be a surprise, that is a consistently reported position that we've been reporting over the financial year. The positive news story there, though, is the high needs block variance has reduced to the tune of about a million since the last time we reported Schools Forum. One of the reasons for that actually is an increase in the allocation based on some of the adjustments in an earlier table, but actually also some of that is because a lot of work has been done to refine the forecasts. And obviously, we have the DSG recovery plan. So although the programme team that are working really hard to capture the benefits that the work is generating, the numbers are going in the right direction, so that's a really good sign. The other thing I just want to highlight to everybody is that as a result of the overall position of the 7.6 million overspend in totality, there's no doubt really that we will exceed the 1% threshold set by the ESFA, which means that we will be required most likely to have a recovery plan in place, which we do. In previous years, the ESFA have asked for that to be submitted. This financial year, because of COVID, they didn't ask for it to be submitted, but we have to be prepared to submit it if they request it. And I'm sure we'll be in a position to do that should we need to, because of the hard work that Dwayne and colleagues have done into putting into the current recovery plan. I'll pause there before I go on to the next section, which is more about the explanations for variances. Has anybody got any questions or I'll proceed? Okay, so in terms of section three, which is the variance sort of analysis and explanations, in terms of schools block, we've got the underspend of the 2.4 million that's articulated there, which will be the schools block contingency, and that was part and parcel of Neil's earlier report when he was talking through how some of that is going to get used in next financial year. Then on this high needs block, we've got the 10.7 million overspend as the overall position. It's worth me just mentioning actually that you'll see in section 3.3, we're able to really articulate where that overspend sits far better now, because a lot of work has gone into identifying and revising that budget so that we know exactly where the overspend sits. In previous years, the overspend was just kept, was all bulked together, if you like, in one line, in one row. But there's a lot more intelligence now on where the overspend sits and therefore where the savings and the interventions need to be targeted, and that links really closely, obviously, to Dwayne's recovery plan. Early years block, there is currently an underspend of just over half a million being forecast there. It's the usual caveat that we do this time each year, which is just to remind everyone that this January census data can change the early years position, and it's very hard to know which way it's going to swing. So if we can just put that caveat against that position for now, then we'll be in a much better place in terms of knowing where we are come March. And the central school service block, there's a small underspend being forecast there, that hasn't changed through the most part of this financial year. That concludes really my report, I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
Okay, Mary Ann Burrows, please.
Hi, just looking at the early years underspend there, can I just question, when you say to keep it where it is, is that sort of going alongside the 1.8 million ring fenced to support the funding next year if necessary, is that correct?
Yeah, it would absolutely be ring fenced to early years, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments, please? Alice?
Just a brief question.
Yes, just about, you're a bit faint, but yes.
Okay, just a question on the overspend for the high needs block. The very top line says 0.069 million on mainstream top-ups, but then the offsetting it, there's 0.817 million for mainstream top-ups, so they appear to be showing in both the overspend and the underspend.
That's a really good point, and I don't have a response for that right now, but what I can do is go away and get the answer for next time or include it in the notes to the meeting, if that would be helpful.
I think if you include it in the notes, Pernima, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I just say thanks for the clarity of that report? I mean, I think the section on the 3.3, the bullet points are really helpful for us to understand how that overspend breaks down. I think we've all understood in the past, it's been said to us about the big overspend on top-ups from the independent and the special schools, but that really does bring it out. So thanks very much for that.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments before we move on, please? Okay, thank you. Item seven is Assistant Directors Update, Ian.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and thank you, everybody. I'm going to make sure I don't duplicate things that have been said by Dwayne and Pernima. So just a couple of points related to their contributions. Firstly, it is right that we reprioritise some of our projects on the Send Change Programme and adjust where appropriate, because of the need for the wider education sector to be making adjustments. We don't make any apologies, though, for children can't wait. So we are continuing with those send work streams wherever it's appropriate and manageable to secure the right outcomes for our children and young people. Pernima was very clear in the update on dedicated schools grant. We are imminently expecting more clarity on early years in terms of national guidance to help stabilise early years and childcare provision. It's quite a hotspot at the moment in terms of resourcing, both on the financial side and sustainability there, when so much in the past has been dependent on take-up, has to be about planned provision in the coronavirus situation, as you'll appreciate. So there's work still to be done there, stabilising on the resource management side, not only financially, but also in making sure we're secure on staffing. At which point I come to one of the key themes of the time. Really, really grateful for all of the work and endeavour, again, on a major step change in expectations in education since the start of this term. We were expecting a busy start to term with a rollout of lateral flow testing and changed expectations, but then national lockdown came in with so many more adjustments and subsequent changes in national guidance. So I know that all of you as individuals are having to adjust in your home lives, and for many of you, you're having to adjust in your work lives as well. And the system has been phenomenal in that. Those of you who are governors, I really encourage you just to keep checking in on the wellbeing of setting and school leaders. Our local wellbeing offer for school leaders continues. Our work through consortia chairs, sector chairs and link officers continues, and they'll be really looking out for the wellbeing for head teachers as they lead all of our school communities through the current changes. For those of you who are chairs of governors, I know you're a big part of checking in, making sure that heads, sectorally, setting leads take some time out to rest and recover, as well as listening, helping and advising on the adaptations that they're making. Overall, we had 210 heads on the Tuesday call this week, real clear stories, affirmation for each other around how they have been adapting and schools have been adapting. At the moment, one of the things that hasn't entirely landed is the expectation that critical worker children should stay at home if the family is able to do that. We know for parents and carers, there can be some real challenges in that. We know that remote learning is of a far higher standard than it was back in the spring, which itself is a credit for the planning preparation that schools have been putting in. But on the data as of yesterday, it appears that attendance on site is the same as at national level in secondary at around four and a half, 4%. Primary, more critical worker children are attending on site than at national average level. And in special schools, almost 50% attendance, whereas nationals around 30%. So if you were to ask me where the hotspots are, where we're going to put real care attention, both in terms of national lobbying, changes for the national guidance, and also in terms of local casework and advice, hotspots very much at the moment are around sustainability of provision in early years and childcare, and around sustainability of provision in our special schools. And yes, there are some of our mainstream schools where advice and support are very much to the fore and resolution, where there are some difficulties they're working their way through. But the hotspots very much are around early years and special schools. A lot of change, a lot of detail and a lot of noise actually in the background as well. So yes, I could spend hours talking about laptop supplies, tablet supplies, catering, adjustments in support services, I won't. I'll just say that one of the things the Schools Forum, we're going to have to keep looking at over the weeks and months ahead, is not only around practice resilience, staffing resilience, but also resourcing resilience. And we know over the weeks and months ahead, there are some schools that really are struggling to resource their COVID response. And we need to look really carefully at that and evolution's in the national guidance on that. Some schools are really struggling with this financially. And yes, almost linked to that as well, is that there are support services that are really going to struggle to work their way through this in a sustainable way. But that's enough for now. But I'll make sure that you know what's coming up on both of those fronts and the options that we have to be able to mitigate those resourcing risks.
I think you're on mute, Phil, but I think you were asking me. Ian, just whilst I have the opportunity to ask you, do you have any timeframe from the DAV when they're going to make the decisions on early years and get back to you from, I know that Mandy and Soh have sent a big list of questions, but I also know that the early years community is waiting with bated breath for the answers to those questions.
You're precisely in the right place on that one.
Do we have any indication at all?
Some of the questions have been getting answers dribbling out. We're still expecting some further early years guidance. As of this lunchtime call with DFE, they are still expecting further guidance to be issued, which picks up the lobby and the questions that we've sent up and were escalated through to DFE and the Cabinet Office.
Okay.
And Pernima, you've got a response to a question as well, haven't you?
Sorry, Ian, yes, that was in relation to the question that Mary asked for my agenda item, so I can come back to that once you've finished your agenda item, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'll pick you up at the end in Chair's Business, Pernima, if that's all right.
Of course, thanks.
We will make sure all the sector reps know as soon as we've got the definitive answers through and the additional guidance through on early years. But one of the things we'll continue to do is to meet with sector representatives each week, not only until the guidance has arrived when we know it's imminent, we are told it is imminent as of this lunchtime's meeting, but also beyond that, some of the sustainability issues need to have settled down before we stop those regular meetings.
Ian, what's the sense of how much parental, from the heads, as to how much parental pressure there is in terms of feedback about the demand for online learning? And I think we were all concerned about the Education Secretary's comment about, well, if people are unhappy, they should get in touch with Ofsted. I think he got a suitable response from that in terms of positive congratulations to Ofsted rather than what he was expecting. But what's the sense from the heads? Is there a lot of pressure building up about demand for online learning from parents?
Yeah, actually, I've always thought that Ofsted should have a compliments box as well as a complaints box. I also think any public sector organisation should have that as well. And I have never seen so many compliments as I've seen in recent months and recent days for education settings, school leaders, so much encouragement from parents as well. The feedback, well, okay, first off, an assurance that 100% of schools are compliant with remote learning requirements, so there's a starting point. The feedback that we are getting from parents and carers is the clarity and the quality of the remote learning offer. Mobilised at no notice is a lot better than it was earlier in the year. So I think a real credit to the consortium arrangements we've got, we've got a SOTOND in each consortia who's been working with the consortia on each individual school's plans and practical arrangements and training, capacity building for remote learning. So schools are in a good place. So schools are in a good place, and the perception coming through from parents and carers definitely endorses that. And for me, one of the messages I've been encouraging heads to get out, and we will keep pushing out as well, is you won't hear me say this very often, if a parent or carer has a concern about a school, it isn't go to Ofsted. That's wrong, and Ofsted say that's wrong. The first place to go is to raise the concern with your teacher, with your head, using the school's complaints process, because then there can be engagement and communication, providing people with the assurance and the support they need to make the most of remote learning. And then go full circle, for parents and carers, it has been an adjustment this last week. And I know with some, with primary aged children and a day job working from home, that's really challenging. And all of us, many of us, whether it's primary children or secondary aged children, are having to juggle the day job with the coaching conversation, the setup conversation, the encouragement with children. But I know, I mean, tracked the epidemiology from the start of all this. Stay at home if you are able is absolutely right against the epidemiology. And for parents and carers too, follow the advice and guidance on remote learning from the school. And beyond that, if they haven't signed up to the Family Information Service newsletters, there's lots of advice, encouragement and activities from the Family Information Service. And if you're aware of any parents and carers who are struggling, get them in touch with the Parent Helpline and Family Information Service, who also are really good at problem solving on childcare too, if that's a problem that the family are facing. So as governors, as setting leaders and school leaders, please use those channels too for encouragement and support for families who are struggling to adapt.
Okay, thank you. Rose Gordon, please.
Hello, sorry, excuse the wait. I've been on a home visit this morning in relation to parents struggling to access their remote learning, actually. I think I just wanted to add that for us, we've got a high take of a critical workers, 47%. So what we're getting back is feedback, and I'm sure this will echo with a lot of people, is the fact that they are, they want to do it. They all acknowledge it's better than it was before because they have been live lessons with the teachers involved and they enjoy that. However, because we've got infants, where they're struggling is they're still working from home. A lot of businesses are still opening and juggling remote learning whilst working at home, multiple children, limited devices is such a challenge. So I just wanted, I know most people know this, but it's just repeating the fact that, you know, I'm very proud of our remote learning provision and our parents are loving it. It's just that challenge when they are still expected to work from home as well. And I know I'm repeating what people already know.
Yeah, and you know, as a local authority, as an employer, one of the things, I did a broadcast this morning for the workforce around adapting to remote learning and being at home. Very much recognise everything that you were saying there, and one of the key messages from us as an employer is that it will take a little time for you as parents and carers to adapt. Heads, the workforce in early year settings and in schools will be really good at giving that practical advice on how best to access that remote learning offer. But we've been getting that message across to team leaders, managers, that need to be tolerant as parents and carers are making those adjustments. And we're trying to get that message across to other employers too. Not all of them are doing that message, but they need to. If they do that way, they're really valuing their workforce. The other end of this, it's those relationships where they know that their employer bears with people that will pay the dividends for them.
Okay, thank you. Nick Evans, please.
Yeah, just to add to Ian's point about special schools, as a special school head, the narrative is very different this time. We, I mean, I know we've got 60% people attendance and it is significantly more difficult with staff anxiety. So just to add to the picture of that and that special schools are, the narrative is very much to remain open. And we do have a lot of staff on site and quite a high percentage of pupils, which makes anxiety, you know, much heightened. So just want to add to the picture from that perspective. It is a real challenge and I know there's been some stuff in the press about vaccinations for special school staff, but I think that would be something that would really help.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to throw my tuppence worth in there as a head teacher as well, I think the really difficult position we're placed in is everyone has different expectations, so whatever provision we put in place, it won't please everyone, which is not where we normally find ourselves. You know, schools are normally relatively, you know, even from school to school, we're fairly similar in what we deliver and how we deliver it. Whereas now, the school across the road could be providing very different remote learning provision for a whole host of reasons. So I think that's the real difficulty at the moment. If that makes any sense at all, you know, we're constantly, I think at the moment, well, my friend's school, my sister's school is doing this, which might not necessarily be right for our school.
Yeah, and there's a very simple baseline and expectations on remote learning, but what it then looks like will vary from setting to setting and community to community. I think that's right. I think you edged on a real insight this time round. Very different to lockdown one, and I think very different to lockdown two. Very quickly, everybody's got an opinion on what they think should be the service offer or their experience. And it is, it's almost like there's a theme of a day that everybody piles in on. And in that, I think it's one of the things that really annoys me that I know out there, heads, setting leads and support services are trying to do everything they can, and most parents and carers are appreciating what's happening on the remote learning offer. It's clear on the feedback that we are getting. If you feel that you're not getting that from a parent and they're persisting and not being appropriate, please call on us as well because there have been situations where I've done direct calls with a parent or a team have been working alongside the school to provide a parent with assurance that the provision is appropriate. And Nick, you know, I and colleagues are in awe of everything that our special school colleagues have been doing to provide that safe, supportive environment for children and for families. And we still have a lot of questions up to national level. The key point you made there, though, is something that we've been lobbying hard on. It's important that we use every tool that's available to us. So it's important there is that rollout of testing, not only to secondary, but it's rapidly deployed to primary staffing and also rapid rollout to those attending. There was the announcement yesterday from next week, there will be a rollout increasingly focused on home testing for those accessing primary phase provision. But that's only part of the story, isn't it, that we are able to identify the asymptomatic and get anybody self-isolating who needs to ASAP? We've also been lobbying, and I know professional associations have been too, that there is a prioritisation for critical workers in the education sector. Also some other sectors as well, like police, for example, as soon as possible. At the moment, of course, the national position is that there are some of the vulnerable age group and medical categories, almost a phase one of the vaccinations have to be complete before they firm up. They're debating this at the moment, aren't they? In phase two, can there be prioritisation for those critical workers that are going beyond at the moment? And will, and really should be a priority, in my view, and organisationally, I know it's a view too, on the vaccination programme.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more questions or comments for Ian before we move on? Ian, thanks for your report.
Thank you, and thanks for everything you're doing. That's serious. All of us have a place to play in vigilance and supporting everybody through this.
Okay, thank you. Item eight then is Forward Plan. Neil?
Yes, thank you, Phil. You've had a copy of the Forward Plan. I'm very mindful that the March meeting has lots of items in it. I'm going to focus on the important ones, which would be the future forum dates and the budget proposal for 2122. And then I'll take a view on any ones that would need to move forward to a future date that don't have a high priority. Otherwise, I think March meeting is going to just have too much business in it. If Schools Forum are happy for that approach, so basically prioritising what is important for the March meeting.
Okay, comments? I think we're happy. Neil, to have a look for you to do that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah, because just to remind members that what we said we would do was we'd probably change the timing of the meetings next year in line with the information, the reports that we're getting in so that I think we don't have the December one, but we have the January one.
Yes, yeah, that's intention.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Right, item nine is Chair's Business. I don't have anything. I'm just going to bring Pernima back in. She's got an answer to the question that was asked earlier.
Thanks, Phil, and thanks, Mary. It was a good spot. That first bullet point on paragraph 3.3 should actually say 69,000 on special school top-ups. So apologies for that typo, and we will, shall we make that reflection in the notes to the meeting, the minutes to the meeting, Neil?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you.
Okay, all right. If there's nothing else from anyone, thank you very much for your attendance today and to Neil, Dwayne and Pernima for your reports that you presented. And we'll see you in, on the 18th of March. Stay safe, everybody. And hopefully we'll be in a different climate by the 18th of March. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Phil.
Cheers.